Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council Committee, the whole meeting for Wednesday, September 20th to 2023, to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Everyone, please stand and join Alderman Kelly in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Mr. Crupp, please call the rule for tonight.
Dunn.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon. Dickman.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ortiz.
Here.
Thank you, sir. So, good evening and welcome, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee, the whole. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. Respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind, as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anyone throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but please ask that, as you share your thoughts, we all have the same desire to make Davenport a better place. Especially for the folks in here, just a reminder, if you put your cellphone, please, on silent or turn it off simply that it doesn't get in the way of anybody speaking. If you want to address the council, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. We would love to know your name, ward, or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. You'll have the opportunity to address on the agenda items and then at the end. Please address the council as a body, not as any one individual. Please no cheering, clapping. You guys have heard my speeches before. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. City Administrator, any update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Okay. We have a whole bunch of public hearings in different areas. The first is community development. We have three. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will discuss the public hearings. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I opened the public hearing on the consolidated plan, annual performance evaluation report for the year ending June 30th, 2023. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment? State your name and address or ward.
Hello. My name is David Ezra Sidran. I live at 1502 Clay Street, Davenport, Iowa. I noticed this report, CDBG Administration, Community and Economic Development. Its purpose is to coordinate, administer, monitor CDBG program with HUD and subrecipients, prepares reports and plans required by HUD. And you want the public's comment on what a fine job they did. They did a terrible job. They did such a terrible job that on Monday, I attended the Housing Commission meeting and I handed each one of the four commissioners a copy of the 74 violations at 324 Main Street and the HUD reports and how it was impossible to put HUD people into 324 Main Street, yet they continued to do so. I mentioned that these HUD reports were so cursory, they even checked off the mobile home tie-downs at 324 Main Street. I understand that this is a pro forma thing. I understand that you're going to give yourself the best possible grade in the world. I'd just like to say that I'm an old professor and I would give you guys a big fat F.
Is there anyone else from the public who's here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing for case REZ 23-03, being the request of 53rd Luxury LLC on behalf of Ed Spear Construction, Inc. and Sheila M. Spear Living Trust to rezone approximately 16 acres of land generally located southeast of 53rd Street and Spring Street from C2 Corridor Commercial District and RMF Multifamily Residential District to C3 General Commercial District. Is there anyone here from the public who's here to comment on this public hearing? Step to the lectern, state your name, address, or ward, please.
Hi. My name is Mike Leep, Jr. I'm the president of the Gurley Automotive Family. We're headquartered in Michawaca, Indiana, right by South Bend, and for the last 16 years, we've been the owners of what was formerly known as Lujak's Automotive and is now known as Smart Automotive Group. We currently, along the 53rd Street Corridor, we have six dealerships in the area here. We have eight total in the state of Iowa. We have 22 dealerships across the Midwest in five states. This is a real big part of our business and obviously, we're trying to do some relocation of our facilities and upgrade our facilities. Facilities that we're currently in are really not designed for the future of automotive retailing. We've already relocated some of our facilities out to 53rd Street, which would be Smart Joda and our Smart Luxury facilities. We do own a piece of empty land that's right next to that where our future Lexus store is going to be, and then we're trying to purchase this additional land and get it rezoned so we can also move our Kia and Hyundai stores out here as well. I'm going to just give you a little bit of the history of our company, just tell you a little bit about what we do in the communities that we're in, and then I'm going to have Chip Walker, who is our design-build expert from Custom Facilities, to come over and talk about the project as well. So, our company was started in 1977 by my father, Mike Leep, Sr., and his partner, Van Gurley. Started out with a Buick store in South Bend, Indiana, and we've grown a lot over the years. Myself and my cousin currently run our business, James Leep, and we take a lot of pride in all the communities that we do business in, and one of the things we take a lot of pride in is giving back to all the communities that we do business in. You know, last year, we gave over $3.5 million to charities in the communities that we do business in, and a lot of it came into this community. And a couple of unique things that we like to do are scholarships for all of our team members, employees. We have a scholarship program for anybody who's worked full-time in our company for two years. Each one of their children qualifies for a $7,000 per year scholarship for four years just for working full-time in our company, so we're really proud of that. We've got over 50 students that we're supporting in college educations across our company right now. We have about 1,200 employees in our company, full and part-time, across the Midwest. Another unique thing we do, and it's, we're really proud to support first responders. Anytime a first responder is killed in the line of duty in the entire state of Indiana, the entire state of Iowa, and also the counties that we do business in, in Michigan, in Illinois, and in Missouri, we send a $10,000 check to the family of those fallen responders. And sadly, we had two in Iowa here last year and seven total last year that we supported, so we're big on supporting first responders as well. So, we love this business. This business is changing a lot. We're in some really old facilities right now, and we just want to put our customers and our team members in a great facility to come do business in, and really, the requirements going forward for car dealerships with the electrification that's coming at us, probably a little bit slower here than some other parts of the country, but it's coming. So, we just want to make sure we've got great facilities for our team members and our customers, and I'm going to call up Chip, and he's going to talk a little bit more about the project. I'm here to answer any questions when that time comes.
Thanks, Mike. Good evening, council. My name's Chip Walker. I'm the president of Custom Facilities. Our offices are 6296 Rucker Road, Suite C, in Indianapolis, Indiana, 46220. In your packets, I think you have pictures of the elevations of the potential buildings that we're going to erect. Those are driven by the manufacturers as far as building materials, content, kind of what they look like. Not a surprise, at the end of the day, a Lexus store is supposed to look like a Lexus store. So, very modern materials, ACM, which is aluminum composite material, you've, I'm sure, seen other car dealerships that have those, lots of glass. One of the questions I always get is about lighting. We subscribe to the Dark Sky Society, which guarantees no halo over the facility, 100% zero cutoff fixtures at all our property lines. I think that you know the Gurley family and business acume that they already have. They're great neighbors, they're great corporate citizens. I've been lucky enough to work with them for a couple of years now. I'm happy to answer any questions on the building design, building materials. If there's a civil question, we have our civil engineer here also tonight.
Yep.
Question's a minute. Oh, sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else from the public who's here to comment? Seeing no one, I move to close this public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. I open our third public hearing for case ROW 23-04, being the request of 53rd Luxury LLC to vacate approximately 25,900 square feet of improved Spring Street right-of-way located southeast 53rd Street. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? State your name and address or ward, please.
My name is John Hoffmeyer. I'm an attorney with the Aaronson Law Group in Cedar Rapids at 425 Second Street Southeast at Unit 900 in Cedar Rapids, and I work for the Gurley Automotive Group, and we just, I just like to say that we'd like you to consider both of these proposals together, both the rezoning and the right-of-way vacation. I would just note that the right-of-way is not being served any properties except for the property that's being redeveloped under the request for the rezoning, and that all of the considerations have been taken to move any utilities so that there won't be any disruption. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. The next area is Public Works. Alderman Dunn, Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the North Utah Avenue Bridge over Duck Creek replacement project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the installation of traffic signals at the intersection of Brady Street and Lombard Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the third public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the installation of traffic signals at the intersection of East 90th Street and the main entrance to John Deere. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the fourth public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Black Hawk Creek and Walnut Creek burn restoration Phase 2 project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And that concludes public hearings for Public Works, Your Honor, and back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Next area is the presentations. We have one, so tonight, we welcome our Visit Quad City friends. On July 29th, the city of Davenport welcomed over 30,000 visitors to RagBri alone. Davenport was honored to serve as the dip site at the end of the 50th Anniversary Ride for this annual event. Dave Harrell, President and CEO of Visit Quad Cities, is here to say a few words on behalf of our partnership for this historic 50th Anniversary Ride. Please, Mr. Harrell and your team, thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, Dave Harrell, President and CEO of Visit Quad Cities. Just wanted to say a couple of things, and then we've got a gift that we want to present to the city and to the mayor. I think, first and foremost, from our perspective, we are incredibly grateful for the partnership and relationship that we have with the city. We are amazing partners, and this was an incredible feat that took a lot of teamwork, took a lot of collaboration, and took a lot of people behind the scenes to make this happen. I think the goal that we had all along, as we were hosting the 50th Anniversary RagBri, and obviously, the Big Seven, was to provide a safe and memorable experience for those participants, and I think, quite frankly, we all delivered on that promise, and that means a great deal to our organization at Visit Quad Cities, and certainly, as a resident of the Quad Cities, I'm proud of that. A couple other things that I think were really important that day. I think as we take a look back and reflect on that weekend, seeing the amount of people that were in this community and how excited they were to finish that incredible week that was certainly enduring for a lot of them, but to be that last impression, and certainly, we were the first impression a week prior, was something that our organization was incredibly proud to host, and a lot of people played a key role in that. I do want to recognize Mayor Mattson, you know, thank you so much for everything that you did. Your leadership is incredibly valued. As you know, in January, the mayor went with me and Kyle Carter from DDP to Des Moines as we officially were announced the end town, and I was just proud to spend that time with him and get to know the mayor, and certainly, we're grateful for everything that he does in our community and the region. I also want to call out Alderman McGinnis and Alderman Condon and Alderman Dunn. I know we might have had some other folks that were there that day. I might have just not seen them, but I saw these folks in action, 4:30 in the morning for some, and what that says to me is a lot of things. That says leadership, the willingness to be there and welcome people into your community and roll up your sleeves and to be a volunteer, and that was probably the biggest challenge that we had, was just trying to find the human capital to pull off an event like this. So, to those members of council, thank you so much. I'm incredibly grateful for that. The feedback has been incredibly positive. I think the sense of community pride by residents, certainly, the pride that visitors felt that day by being in our community is something I think we can all take back and say this was a win for Davenport, this is a win for the Quad Cities. I would also like to thank the amazing professional staff of the city of Davenport. I think from day one, the second that we started discussing this event, they were incredibly engaged. Their expertise was valued by my organization, and I can't imagine a better team of public servants that we had the chance to work alongside. So, that includes some folks like, and if you'll indulge me, Mayor, Steve Schneider, and if I butcher some names, I apologize, James Hines, Ferris Jones, Ben Johnson, Gio Hernandez, Jerry Garretson, Brian Reist, Hannah Whitehurst, Samantha Torres, Tiffany Thorndike, Rich Oswald, Lieutenant Smith, Jerry Von Dera, Kevin Randall, Ryan Postian, Betsy Tubbs, Chad Dyson, Sarah Ott, Stephanie Bligh, Courtney Jones, Nicole Gleason, Major Brown, Chief Carleston, Chief Bladel, and obviously, Corey Spiegel. That's 25 people that we had the pleasure and the honor that we got to work alongside to bring this amazing weekend to fruition, and that kind of teamwork, that kind of collaboration is not easy. Corey, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for stepping up time and time again to make that happen, so I am incredibly grateful for that. So, Mayor, on behalf of Visit Quad Cities and our friends at RagBri, who can be here tonight, Matt Fippen and Ann Laurie, we've got a gift for the city that we'd like to present you if you'd come out here. This is an incredible picture of the dip site at Marquette, and if you were down there, you could feel the energy, you could feel how proud these people were to be a part of this moment in their lives, and we're happy that we can present this to you and you can hang this proudly at the city. So, Mike?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I think we want to get, they want to get a picture?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. And then, lastly, we also have what's called a challenge coin, which is a very unique opportunity for all of the riders that literally completed the entire journey across the state of Iowa. So, these are mementos that RagBri has provided all of us, and we hope that members of the council will proudly display these in your offices or at home, so each one of you will receive those. So, thank you very much. We're grateful for the opportunity. Thank you for your partnership, your continued support of tourism, our regional destination. It was certainly something that we are very proud to share with all of you and just grateful for the time tonight. So, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Visit Quad Cities and Dave and your staff. Partnerships and teamwork are the key to success, and certainly, working with you is an honor. It's always a wonderful experience because your focus is just doing best for the community, and thank you for all of your team, and I'm very proud and happy to get to know all of them because the work and the effort that they put in to care about this Quad Cities location is probably unheralded. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move to petitions and communications. I see, let's see, Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. That was a great segue to what I wanted to talk about tonight. I had a few words. This is Employee Appreciation Week at the city of Davenport, and I wanted to take a moment to give a shout-out to the employees all across departments who serve this city and its residents. You constantly keep the city moving forward in ways the public never sees. We get to show up for the photo ops. Every year brings a wide variety of ongoing programs, new road construction, management of housing programs, permits, property inspections, snow clearance, nuisance abatement, planning, economic development, just the day-to-day business of making sure people are safe and the bad guys don't win. It is the staff who jumps through all the hoops and requirements laid out by the state of Iowa or any city focused on good governance. Now, that's the normal work of the city, day in, day out, year in, year out, but no year seems normal anymore. Recently, each year has brought more opportunity and more heavy lifting with essentially the same staff. Issues during the 2019 flood forced all to take a hard look at a river that is consistently rising to greater levels everywhere than ever before. The subsequent task forces, the council directive for a long-term flood resiliency plan was pushed forward and managed by city staff. And then there was the CP raising its tracks. A task force of council, commission members, and staff negotiated a final rehab plan, but it was staff, again, doing the heavy lifting and making it happen. Then the pandemic rolls around. Again, the burden fell on staff to make sure city workers and residents were safe. They kept the wheels on the bus while getting federal emergency rental housing and business impact funding to individuals and agencies in a timely fashion. Following that, the opportunities generated by the ARPA pandemic funding and the need to move swiftly to determine how those dollars would be spent. The process was developed by staff determined by council, and who got the job of implementing those plans? Staff, again, with project responsibility spread across many departments. A few months later, CP announced merger plans. Again, it was staff taking a strategic view of the area impacted, the potential impact, dollars, expenses, public safety, access at each area that formed the basis of negotiations and plans going forward. These are just a few projects in a long line of work, and guess what? Now we know that the new normal is not business as usual. I've had the great opportunity to work alongside and side-by-side with you during challenges and fun times as well. I believe this council and this city are fortunate to have your knowledge, your commitment, and your sense of teamwork, and I just wanted to say tonight how much I, for one, very, very much appreciate you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Your Honor. The fourth ward will have a ward meeting this Monday, September 25th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the Keppi Building located inside the Mississippi Valley Fairgrounds, so everybody's welcome to come to that. And then, secondly, last week, I asked for an apology from my colleagues that decided to leak confidential information. I hope they use their time tonight to build back a little trust and give an apology to the public and to the council for leaking that confidential information. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Alderman Kelly.
This has been hard for me to even bring this to the attention of people, but I think it's interesting. So, I don't want to negate the fact that the city employees work very hard and do the things that they do, but people have asked me when I say, "How come I don't feel the same equal feeling and the things that go on that everybody else feels?" Well, when you have a colleague that says stuff to you like he was a nice colored gentleman, I have to say, "We don't say those words anymore." Then you have a colleague that says, "I always say, 'What's up, nigga? How's it going, nigga?'" "Well, how you doing, nigga?", and try and explain to me why that's okay, but they want to get all this other stuff going. I just don't understand that. This is what I deal with as a councilman in the city of Davenport, and how is that okay that I don't feel welcome in the know of the position that I have, but we're supposed to sit up here and kumbaya? So, it's really hard for me to kumbaya and still do the hard work that, because this is not an easy position. This is very not an easy position, so I'm telling you, it's interesting to me. And then I have witnesses of nigger night that nobody has spoken up and said anything on my behalf. So, not only is it horrible that this has happened to me, but when you have folks that, I guess people don't understand, so I've sat silent for so long, but when you sit silent and you know that somebody's been mistreated, how does that make you feel? You know what I mean? So, I don't want to say that the city isn't doing great things because we are doing great things, but we are not all getting the same equal treatment on this council.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Anyone else? Okay, I just have a couple of things. I was proud to chair the Metro Coalition State of Iowa, the 10 largest cities, meeting today. A lot of great discussion as we move forward with the legislature in the next session. Great collaboration and know that the 10 largest cities are working hard to engage and help legislators understand the impacts they have to cities, so we'll continue to do that. And then, I just want to put out publicly, next week, I intend to put on the agenda the name of Chris Jerome to be considered by the council for appointment to the seventh ward, so you'll see that next week. I understand there's potential litigation, but my appointment will stand unless, of course, the court says otherwise. Thank you. We'll move on now. Actions for discussion, there are four, community development, public safety, public works, and finance. The first one's community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a first consideration ordinance for case REZ 23-03, being the request of 53rd Luxury LLC on behalf of Ed Spear Construction, Inc. and Sheila M. Spear Living Trust to rezone approximately 16 acres of land generally located southeast of 53rd Street and Spring Street from C2 Corridor Commercial District and RMF Multifamily Residential District to C3 General Commercial District. Is there anyone from the public who is here to comment on this agenda item? Seeing no one, is there anyone from the council here to comment? Alderman Jobchin.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I don't have any strong opposition to this. I guess my thoughts just go to, and maybe I just have a gentleman come up, someone from the company doing the development come up, I just have one question. Thank you. I apologize, I didn't remember your name. Is the intention to clo, are the dealerships now along 61 Welcome Way, or is the intention to close those, those dealerships?
Mike's probably better to answer that than me. Sorry.
Yeah, Mike Leep. So, yeah, currently, those facilities are leased, so, which is another reason that we're looking to relocate because we don't own those facilities. So, what happens to those would be in the control of the owner. The owner is Capital Automotive Real Estate. They are specialists in investing in dealership properties all across America. So, generally, what happens is they'll put that for resale on the market. It'll happen in one of two ways. They've had properties in the past where they've sold the properties as is, or it's possible that they may choose to scrape the property and just sell it as a redevelopment property, but that's really not our, it's not our control.
All right. Thank you very much. And so, with that, again, I'm good, you can have a seat. You know, it's just always my thought process of, you know, we've got a lot of development coming out the northeast section of Davenport, you know, if we start losing... development coming out the northeast section of Davenport, you know, if we start losing various businesses. And I've talked about this with residential development, you know, we've talked about, you know, the mall and what are we doing with that property. And so, I guess, you know, we just have to keep our eye on what's going on here. I welcome, you know, welcome this company to, you know, develop out on 53rd Street. I mean, it's our major corridor, right, east and west. And so, obviously, it's something that looks fitting for this area. And again, I have no opposition to that. I just, again, my thought process of what's going to happen to these buildings that are going to be vacated. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say we had a good community meeting about this earlier on, and one of my primary concerns in that area is stormwater runoff because we have had problems without the development. And of course, you add a lot more. And I want to appreciate that I had a long talk about the stormwater management and concerns that I had. I've walked that area extensively along the creeks and everything, and I really appreciated the opportunity to talk to the person that's your stormwater management. And I feel that it'll be taken care of well. So, thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else, this item will move on. We'll go to item number two, which is a First Consideration Ordinance for Case ROW 23-04, being the request of 53rd Luxury LLC to vacate approximately 25,900 square feet of improved Spring Street right-of-way located southeast 53rd Street. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. Alderwoman Lee, please set our agenda.
Thank you very much. I move that items one and two be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor? Are there any opposed? All right, the community development agenda has been set. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Lee. The next series, Public Safety. Alderman Jobchin and Alderman Ortiz will discuss. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item under the Public Safety Agenda is a Third Consideration Ordinance amending Schedule 7, No Parking of Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of the Unmissable Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding 11th Street along the south side from Prospect Terrace to Judson Street thereto. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, First Consideration Ordinance amending Schedule 7, No Parking of Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of the Unmissable Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding Jefferson Avenue along the west side from East 38th Street north to the dead end thereto. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number three, First Consideration Ordinance amending Schedule 11, Resident Parking of Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of the Unmissable Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding Scott Street along the west side from Rush Home Street to Lombard Street and along the east side from Rush Home Street, south 355 feet thereto. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number four, Resolution approving street, lane, or public ground closures on listed dates and times for outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Davenport Fire Antique and Restoration Society, annual fire muster and lights and sirens parade. Village of East Davenport, Sunday, October 1, 2023, 7:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. closures. East 11th Street from Mound Street to Jersey Ridge Road, Christie Street from East 11th Street north to the alley. Next, Davenport Community School District, band spectacular for Davenport Schools, Brady Street Stadium, 3603 North Brady Street, 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 10, 2023, with a rain date of Monday, October 16, 2023. Closure, East 36th Street from Brady Street to Davenport Avenue. Next, Davenport Community School District, Central High School Homecoming Parade, 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Thursday, October 12, 2023. Closures, which are police-controlled. East 18th Street from Woodland Avenue to Fernwood Avenue, Fernwood Avenue from East 18th Street to Forest Road, Forest Road from Fernwood Avenue to Middle Road, Middle Road from Forest Road to Woodland Avenue. Next, St. Ambrose University, Killer B 5K, Saturday, October 21, 2023, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Closures, Lombard Street from Ripley Street to Lily Avenue, Ripley Street from Lombard Street to Dover Court, Dover Court from Ripley Street to Gaines Street, Gaines Street from Dover Court to Lombard Street, Scott Street from Dover Court to Lombard Street, Rush Home Street from Gaines Street to Lily Avenue, Lily Avenue from Rush Home Street to Pleasant Street, Pleasant Street from Lily Avenue to Warren Street, Warren Street from Pleasant Street to Spalding Boulevard, Spalding Boulevard from Warren Street to Berg Place, Berg Place from Spalding Boulevard to Lily Avenue. Next, Brian Dorfeldt, Village Zombie Run, Village of East Davenport, 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Saturday, October 28, 2023. Closures, Bell Avenue from East 29th Street to Elm Street, eastbound Elm Street from Bell Avenue to Jersey Ridge Road, southbound Jersey Ridge Road from Elm Street to East 11th Street, East 11th Street from Jersey Ridge Road to Mound Street, east-west alley between East 11th Street and East 12th Street and Mound Street and Jersey Ridge Road, Mound Street from East 11th Street to East 12th Street. And then last, City of Davenport Halloween Parade Downtown, 11:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Sunday, October 29, 2023. Closures, Third Street from Pershing Avenue to River Drive, Pershing Avenue, Iowa Street, and Leclerc Street from Second Street to Fourth Street, Third Street from Pershing Avenue to Ripley Street, Second Street from Iowa Street to Ripley Street, Ripley and Main Streets from Second Street to Fourth Street, east-west alley between Scott and Ripley Streets and Second Street and River Drive, east-west alley between Harrison and Main Streets and Second Street and River Drive, Perry Street from East Second Street to River Drive, and then beginning at 2:00 p.m., Brady and Harrison Streets from River, Second Street to Fourth Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on any of these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that I move on. Item number five, Motion approving noise variance requests on the listed dates and times for outdoor events. Again, we'll read all of these before asking for comment. First, Gunche's Outdoor Band, 2905 Telegraph Road, 7:00 p.m. Friday, September 29, 2023 to 12:00 a.m. Saturday, September 30, 2023, outdoor music band over 50 dB. Next, Davenport Fire Antique and Restoration Society, annual muster and lights and sirens parade. Village of East Davenport, 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Sunday, October 1, 2023, outdoor music over 50 dB. Next, Davenport Community School District, Central High School Homecoming Parade, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Thursday, October 12, 2023, with outdoor music band over 50 dB. And last, City of Davenport Halloween Parade Downtown, 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Sunday, October 29, 2023, outdoor music bands' performances over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Council? Seeing none, that I might move on. And last, we have item number six, Motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read those under Section A, New License, New Owner, Temporary Permit, Temporary Outdoor Area, Location Transfer, etc. Jimmy O's Saloon, 2735 Telegraph Road, Permanent Outdoor Area, License Type, Class C Liquor, On Premises. Next, Stomp Box Brewing, 210 East River Drive, Number 101, Temporary Extended Outdoor Area, October 5, License Type, Class C Liquor, On Premises. Next, West Side Grocery, 1802 West 7th Street, New License, New Owner, License Type, Class E Liquor, Carryout. Next, Laduena, Mexican Restaurant, 1330 Washington Street, New License, License Type, Class C Liquor, On Premises. Next, Hy-Vee Fast and Fresh, 4631 East 53rd Street, New License, License Type, Class E Liquor, Carryout. And then, Fafusion LLC, 5266 Utica Ridge Road, Outdoor Area, New License, License Type, Class C Liquor, On Premises. We also have items listed under Section B, the Annual License Renewals, which I will not read. However, I will make note of the item Yoshi's Bar and Filipino Canteen, 831 West 3rd Street, Outdoor Area, License Type, Class C Liquor, which has a staff recommendation of denial for the outdoor area. Before I get to that item, is there any comments from public on any of the other items? Any from council? And then, before I open it up for comment from public and council, I believe there is someone from staff wishing to come up and comment on this item.
Good evening. Mallory Bagby, Assistant City Attorney. Before you is a liquor license renewal with a recommendation to approve the license but deny the outdoor service area. Outdoor service areas are privileges only granted with the approval of the local authority. You, in the past few months, the Police Department and the Legal Department have been working closely on the safety concerns related to Yoshi's Bar as there have been numerous concerns regarding crowd size, violence, noise levels, litter, and loitering. Yoshi's Bar has an outdoor service area that exits into its parking lot. There are large crowds congregating within the current outdoor service area and then spilling out into the parking lot and onto the neighboring properties and the neighboring adjacent right-of-way, including the sidewalks and the alley. There are concerns about the sheer number of people congregating with no crowd control conducted by Yoshi's Bar. Estimates of the crowd and 911 callers, which are sometimes the owner himself, are ranging from 50 to 200 people in the parking lot and the adjacent right-of-way. These large crowds have become entangled in fights on a number of occasions and the security, if there is any that day, is ill-equipped to handle these crowds. There have also been a number of noise complaints related to the hired musical entertainment that performs outdoors well past midnight, the presence of which encourages people to be outside, creating noise, creating crowds, creating litter, creating loitering. To be clear, Yoshi's Bar, their problems have escalated significantly in the past two months. They have not shown any signs of slowing down, however. In the last year, there have been 97 total calls for service directly to the licensed premises. Of those, 72 have been in August and September. An officer and I met with the owner in mid-August to discuss the pattern of events and provided suggestions. Close the bar when problems begin arising in the night, hire adequate security, and control the parking lot. Those things have not happened. Since that conversation only a month ago, two large group fights have occurred in the parking lot and the outdoor area, one of which sent a bloody patron to the hospital, and both fights involved arrests for disorderly conduct by fighting. As recently as Friday, officers have responded to noise complaints only to be told by the owner that he had a noise variance that allowed outdoor music to be played past midnight. This was not true. Officers, believing the owner, did not cite anyone or require correction. On Saturday, officers again responded to a noise complaint but called the owner's bluff and regarding his, called the owner's bluff regarding his assertion that he had a variance, and the owner then admitted that he did not have a noise variance, but he knew the process for applying. While the owner is somewhat responsive to officers' requests and suggestions, it is only once officers are already involved in the evening. The owner has not shown proactivity or responsiveness of his own accord, and this bar has become a drain on police resources. In trying to identify solutions to this crowd control problem, staff saw a pattern that most of the events of concern are related to the outdoor service area. Because of this pattern, staff believes that denial of the outdoor service area would promote a safer environment. If concerns continue to arise, we can still pursue a public safety nuisance action, but we are hopeful that denial of the outdoor service area will quell the large crowds and allow Yoshi's Bar to provide better crowd control in its parking lots and areas adjacent to its property. I will have a report with dates and additionals next week, but wanted to provide some themes of the events of concern tonight.
Thank you. And before we go to council, I will ask if there's anybody, anybody from public wishing to comment on this item. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Wayne Simon's Third Ward. There's a lot of bars on Third Ward on the west side. If you close them all up at 10 o'clock, they're going to go somewhere. So, you're just going from one bar to the next bar to the next bar. So, if you open them back all up, it might disperse the crowd a little bit because everybody goes to their bar. I patron a bar in the west end. I've never had a problem in that bar, but I guess you have to close at 10 o'clock. But, so, if you close them all down at 10 o'clock, they're all going to go somewhere. And that's why you're having overcrowding over this, over that, in one location each time, because you've penalized all the other bars. So, that's my opinion. If you open them up, the crowds disperse because not everybody goes to the same bar. So, you have less people at each location, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I open it up to council. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. That was a lot, Mallory, and I just want to make sure I understand. You're recommending that we deny the outdoor license, and were there any other actions that were being recommended or required of the owner?
Right now, right now, there's a license and an outdoor service privilege that are before you. We believe that the outdoor service closure would quell the problems that we're having. We think that incremental steps would help with the safety issues.
So, just the one thing that you think will take care of the problem?
We hope so.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. I had a couple, this is certainly an area I represent. I did want to point out that there in Third Ward right now, two bars that are being debated to close at 10 o'clock. Every other bar in Third Ward that I know of right now is open full hours. So, there are many bars in the city doing very well. So, this issue with Yoshi's is something that I have been working with staff on and with property owners nearby for about a month and a half. So, this is, this comes tonight with, you know, my understanding of what's going on. This area of town is a very diverse area of town. It always has been. There are daytime businesses here who close at 2:00 in the afternoon or close at, you know, 8:00 at night. And then, there are other bar-type establishments that are open until 2:00. So, it's a, it's an area of town that sees one activity at a certain time of the day and other activity late at night. I'd also like to point out that for a very marginalized, often marginalized, community, this has been, this area has been a safe place for them to come together without being harassed for decades. So, there are establishments in this area that have been there for decades that, and it has become a safe place. But again, the diversity of the restaurants we have, of the types of people we have is nothing new here, and it's welcomed in this area. So, unfortunately, my involvement with this began with calls from people who have businesses there, and I'd like to read a couple of things. I asked if they would come. I asked people to come tonight and said, "Can you, you want to come and talk about this?" Their fear is retaliation, and it's a very real fear because there has been, there have been some threats of violence against people relating to all of this. So, let me, let me read you what I got. So, from one of the nearby businesses, "On Friday and Saturday nights, starting around 11:30 p.m., the neighborhood gets busy with people loitering, drinking, and doing drugs in Yoshi's parking lot, alley, and private property adjacent to my property and parking lot. They played loud vulgar music outside until about 1:45 a.m., which is why people are outside standing around and loitering and drinking. I continually on Friday and Saturday nights must ask people that are in my parking lot loitering to leave the property, and I'm threatened every weekend when I ask them to leave. I have asked to call police, I have had to call police several times to have loiters removed from my parking lot. They have not gotten permission from many neighbors to have their music past the 10:00 p.m. noise ordinance, and it is way louder than 50 dB. Every night, we pick up several liquor bottles and blunt wrappers from our parking lot. There are police there every weekend, and they do the best they can with the tools that they are given." Okay, this is from another property owner. "I am writing this to you to inform you," and I know who these people are. I can't use their names because they're afraid. "I'm writing this to inform you of the negative impact of Yoshi's Bar and Filipino Canteen has made on our neighborhood. Trash is accumulated in the city sidewalks, streets, and private properties, specifically glass liquor bottles and clear cups that are brought outside its establishment. The patrons' nightly routine consists of consuming alcoholic drinks and smoking weed outside the property, and park cars with blaring music in public, and private properties trespassing and loitering, and they just end up throwing their trash into the streets, grass, littering, making the area look very trashy. In the mornings, you can find broken glass, liquor bottles, cigar wraps, and cups. They serve their alcoholic beverages throughout the Third Street and Warren Street. Yoshi's does not make any efforts to resolve this issue." And these are, this is a series of comments. "Yoshi's is the new shenanigans, and it's not okay. Too many unruly and loud, obnoxious people. Agreed, we had our area safe after many years of struggle. Now, we..." Now we have to do it again. And the loitering everywhere, I don't want to see other bars suffer due to this. I know it is affecting late-night patrons already. Something needs to be done. Someone's gonna end up getting hurt or worse with the way this is already escalating. I told you about how on my birthday, I was outside, and people come, walking around the corner from there saying, that's that effing F-dash-dash-dash-t bar. I'll let you fill in the blanks. Seems the owner doesn't give, and I'll change this, a hoot, once people walk out of his establishment as long as they are spending money before leaving trashed. Seconds after we left, a car pulled up, and we're waving guns at one of the patrons of another bar. And there, I'm so sorry we have to deal with this in this neighborhood. I would encourage anyone that has problems to call the police. That's the only way we're gonna be able to stop this madness." I will say again, there, there are establishments on this street that have been there for many, many years. There have not been the gathering, the gathering of people, there have, there have not been these issues. The, what is the difference? The difference is, is a bar that has, is violating basically city ordinance. I believe there was one, there was one noise variance granted by this council early on, but it is a situation that has escalated rapidly. It is endangering businesses and people. Businesses are having to do things like close off their parking lots, put no trespassing signs. No one will come and tow cars because of fear of the danger there. So this is what folks are dealing with now in the area, and that was, in an area that was essentially pretty quiet. So I am very concerned about this, and I certainly support the staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, uh, oh. Alderman Kelly. No.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I don't agree with any of the things that are going on in Yoshi's, but it's interesting to me how we paint the narrative. So with what I said earlier tonight, I don't want to rehash, but you know, I, I applaud Belado and Brown, I love those guys, I think they're amazing, but this is unfortunately something that the police department has to deal with. And what it is, I've seen the videos, they're, they're bad. They are bad. But once again, the narrative is, if, if this is happening, we need to discipline these people, you know what I'm saying? So let's not, let's not sit here and say, God, I can't even put my words into it, but what it really boils down to me when she said the shenanigans, it's a black patrons. And so this, that's why I'm saying, once again, it's hard for me to sit up here and listen to some of this BS, because I know it, it's not good. I can show you guys the videos, but it's just like quit painting a narrative, because once again, these folks will go somewhere else. So when they go somewhere else, because I have it in my neighborhood, I don't get this kind of attention. Those young ladies came here with their bosoms hanging out, and everybody was excited to see those young ladies. So when Kelso's does this, I don't get the same narrative, but it happens all over the city. So just had to say that.
Now seeing no one else, um, oh, sorry. I guess I have a question and then maybe a couple of comments. First one for our corporate counsel. So with the likely recommendation of this being on discussion agenda next week, again, this is just for the outdoor service area. So if, if the vote is no next week is just for the outdoor service area, the, the business continues to operate indoors as it would?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess my, my comment is, you know, I, I would, I would agree with the, with the denial. I think we need to continue to, you know, do what we can to, you know, maintain the public safety, you know, address some of these concerns. You know, we have been heavy-handed on, on some other bar owners, and so if we need to do that to someone else, then we need to kind of maintain that, that fairness there, right? If we're gonna be punitive to one bar owner for, for actions and how their business is run, then same way, if this is the first step for, for Yoshi's Bar, then that is, and my encouragement to staff would be then we, we stay on them, we hold them accountable for their actions and make sure that there's follow-through, and if not, then, then we take those next steps. So with that, I would recommend that that item be placed on discussion, and I would ask Alderman Ortiz to please set our agenda.
All right, I move all items on consent. And Yoshi's Bar and Filipino Canteen be placed on discussion.
Have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That concludes public safety. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Next area is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution accepting work performed under the FY twenty-twenty-one contract sewer repair program to Hagerd Earthworks of Muscatina, Iowa, in the amount of five-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty dollars and forty-five cents. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting work completed under the Hillendale Road and Northwest Boulevard and West Seventy-Sixth Street and Northwest Boulevard intersection improvements project by Langman Construction in the amount of one million, seven-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety dollars and twenty-eight cents. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the North Utah Avenue Bridge over Duck Creek replacement project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the installation of traffic signals at the intersection of Brady Street and Lombard Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the installation of traffic signals at the intersection of East Ninetieth Street and the main entrance of John Deere. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Black Hawk Creek and Walnut Creek restoration Phase Two project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number seven is a resolution awarding a five-year contract for transit planning and scheduling software to Optibus Incorporated of New York, New York, in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Yes, sir. I'd like to move that all seven items be moved to the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The agenda's set, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Next area is finance, and I'll lead the discussion. Resolution setting number one is a resolution setting a public hearing on granting an overhead electric easement across city-owned property south of River Drive at East Fourth Street to Mid-American Energy. Is there any public with discussion? Seeing none, any counsel? Very good, this will move on. Item two is a resolution setting a public hearing granting a gas and regulator, regulator station easement on city-owned property located at three thousand East Locust Street to Mid-American Energy. Is there anyone from the public wanting to discuss? Counsel? Seeing none, then there's purchases of ten thousand to fi, fifty thousand. I'll accept a motion to put both on consent.
Second.
Motion and second for both to consent. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Next area is other motions, I'm sorry, ordinances, resolutions, and motions. There are none for this evening. The next area, is there any public with business? Please, if there are, you know the rules, we'd love to know your name, order, address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. You have five minutes. Please be respectful of, of the concerns. Thank you. Any, next, please.
My name is Katie, I'm from Davenport. You really know when it's election season around, when the minions and the ones who love the Kool-Aid that'll lock on the council drinks, absolutely love it, come out in force. Heck, some don't even live in Davenport that we're seeing. Corvile, Bettendorf, or they're linked to the commissions paid by the city, so of course, why would they speak out against the mayor or anybody else on this council? And they don't realize what's going behind the scenes, because if you don't live in Davenport and you're not down here at council, you don't see what's going on. And of course, it's not everyone on this council either, but for the ones that stay silent to be a part of the majority, then you are part of the problem. It's truly a shame that it took a building collapse to kill Brandon, Ryan, Daniel, and the unknown, along with changing Peach's life forever when she lost a precious leg, which in turn changes her, changes her wife Lexi's life, and all the tenants and their families who lost everything that was in the building, that had to start a new life from scratch from the corruption and wrongdoing that's been done for years regarding that building and other things within the city. But now that the light is shining through on all the corruption, it's coming to the light. And you can try to continue to hide it, you can deflect the issue, you can try to gaslight the public through posts or letters or people that talk with us, whatever it comes. We see the ones that are trying to actually be part of the solution, and what's done in the dark will always come to light, no matter what you try to do. Are the ones, and the ones that are not part of the CS crew, one even got removed, and the other two, well, should already know, be known on the council, but I can tell you as a movement family, it's been seen from day one. We as a movement aren't going anywhere either, which should, by now, you already should know that. Some are more worried about their job not being fun anymore, but yet you're paid to be here every week. We all know that jobs aren't always fun. I know I've had my bad days. We are here every week. We're not paid one cent to be here to keep the light of three-twenty-four lit. It has taken physical, emotional, and even spiritual time out of each and every one of us, and I know there's a lot of people that can back that up, taking time away from our loved ones in lives. We gain nothing from this, no hidden personal agendas, no, we don't gain fame from this because we are a family unit, and we all bring stuff to the table because we all have strengths in different areas. This isn't always fun either, but we all show up. We are the voice now of the ones that were robbed of theirs, and we all made a commitment that we were gonna see this through, and we are. Also remember that everyone that is sitting on this council, along with the staff who knew nothing before they took their jobs or they took their oath of the positions, are getting involved in politics, period. And you all thought you had a good, the perfect plan. So why is it would it be any different for anyone that's running this time around? I think it should be exciting that we have more people involved in politics and want to get involved, and I, I pray and hope that we have even more people. But as you're sitting up there right now, some have this big head that they're just the best thing that God ever gave, and I'm sorry, that's the wrong type of attitude. Pat yourself on the back, you're just such, such a good alderman, okay. But new people can come in and learn, just like each one of you have, and bring different perspectives and maybe make the changes that need to happen, that we're still going to seek for. Desperately needs change in accountability done for three-twenty-four, transparency among the council and to its public. It's time we start working together, but how can you do that when there's so many who want to hold on to the money-making wrong way that has taken hold? Having that look at me, I'm the greatest thing on God ever made type attitude doesn't look good on anybody, and remember, what you have right now could easily be taken away from you at any second of the day. So what will you be left with? Nothing but words. That whole no merit because God didn't create anyone above no one else, only He is.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Hi, my name, my name is Gary Eklund, and I live in Davenport, Iowa, which I have taken to calling the most white supremacist city government in the United States of America, which I sincerely and honestly believe. I am here tonight, I want to announce for the first time that I will be doing a book on wheelchair-accessible gardens. I was gonna try to read stuff, but I'm, I'm, I have limited time, and I will just say, I'm doing a book on wheelchair-accessible gardens specifically because the city of Davenport, Iowa declared it illegal for me to have wheelchair-accessible gardens and has sent city staff from the inspections Department and the Police Department to destroy my gardens, to destroy my plants, and they have literally said, I have no legal right to have gardens, I have no legal right to have plants, I have no legal right to build wheelchair-accessible gardens, and did two separate hate crimes, one on December seventh, which I believe the Davenport Police Department and the Scott County Attorney's Office failed me miserably by refusing to investigate and criminally prosecute. I believe that if they had prosecuted, if they had investigated, they didn't even investigate. If they had investigated, there's December seventh crime, and they had arrested the people involved, I believe that the collapse of three-twenty-four would not have happened because the people in the neighborhood department would have been arrested and new people would have been in there. Before I go any further, I want to show you some of what they destroyed. I told you before, I have an art website now that I've created since the city did what they did. This is up for sale, it's called Illegal Red Nasturtiums Carnations, Red Zenas, Gold Dust Alissums, Early Jalapenos, et cetera. This photograph was taken when I was trying unsuccessfully to convince the legal department that I had a right to grow plants. These were destroyed on July seventh as illegal debris. They, 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 they said, this is illegal debris. My red carnations, I spent so much money on. This one is called Illegal New Seedless Concord Grape and Illegal Baby Red Carnation Seedlings. And if you look close, you probably can't see it from there, but there's a grape vine, on the grape vine, you can actually read the words Seedless Concord Grapes, and there are baby red carnations, I bought the seeds and the potty so forth. Those went in the garbage truck with the police with their guns, protecting the neighborhood inspectors. They, they say these were illegal. And why did they say they're illegal? Because I am a low-life half-breed, and all my black neighbors are lowlifes, and as they, as I told the mayor in a letter in twenty-twenty-one, they said to me that they have different rules for superior people in superior neighborhoods, and different rules for inferior people in inferior neighborhoods, although he used the terms higher class and lowlife. This is called Illegal Cucumbers. When the city came into my yard, they tore up plants by the roots while taunting me. This is, well, this one is called Illegal Blueberries, it's for sale. This one is called Illegal Grapes, it's for sale. This one is called Illegal Blueberries. This one is called Illegal Peppers. The vast majority of all my peppers, all my blueberries, all my raspberries, all my blackberries were destroyed by the city, and they made it clear that these were different rules for different neighborhoods, different people, they call lowlifes. And I wrote to the mayor in twenty-twenty-one, I wrote to the Human Resources Director begging for assistance, and I got none. I got none. This is called, I took this recently out at the Lowe's, and it's called Sold in Stores, Not Legal in My Yard, while the people that the legal department sent over to my yard, they tore out every single trellis in my yard, each and every single garden trellis in my yard. And if they had peas attached to it, they tore out the peas, and if it had beans attached to it, they tore out the beans, and if it had grapes attached to it, they tore out the grapes. And if it had squash or, or moonflowers or this red flower, I forget the name of, they tore those out by the roots too, while taunting me. This is what I was not allowed to show you, the, a man I view as a white supremacist criminal said the police department couldn't let me bring it in. This is called White Supremacist Crime Evidence at City Hall. These are mostly not garden items, although there is some milkweed and some red zenas there, but these were all items that were destroyed by the city. And this, all the paints, I was doing painting this summer, all the paints that were in this were destroyed, as was almost all the artwork. This was nailed down, and they kept threatening to, to tear out the nails to put this away, but all of the artwork in my yard, all of my paints, thousands of dollars of paints went in the garbage truck. I was threatened with the ref by a man I regard as a white supremacist, and I am actually, I haven't filed the paperwork yet, but I am gonna ask that the city's top two legal department lawyers be disbarred and criminally prosecuted for declaring wheelchair-accessible gardens and all these plants illegal, because this is not even, it's not even selective enforcement, it's just making up laws. Blueberries are illegal for you because you're a half-breed lowlife. You're not white enough and wealthy enough to be considered high-class.
Thank you, sir.
They're trying to make you homeless.
Thank you, sir. Please.
My name is David Esri Sidran, I've been a My name is David Ezra Sidran, I've been a third ward resident most of my life. This is the nine-one-one incident report for three twenty-four Main Street on May twenty-eighth, 2023. I'm going to read from it. T-1 went in the north stairwell to the fifth floor first. We were unable to access the center section of the building due to structural concerns, so all our primary searches were conducted on the north side of the building. The subject from five-ten was found in his window, and we were able to yell at him from another window. He stated that his door was blocked, and he was unable to get out of his apartment. The T-1 engineer noted the subject through a window and was able to direct him to another window for further communication. The subject stated that he was unable to exit his apartment due to debris blocking the doorway. It was determined that the subject would need to be rescued from the elevated window opening. E-2 officer and engineer redirected themselves at my request to utilize T-1's aerial to gain access to the roof. T-1 crew came off the building to assist with the rescue. An extension ladder was taken to the lower section of the roof on A side via the aerial, and then extended to the ladder to the subject standing at the window. After some persuasion, crews were able to get the subject onto the extension ladder and down to the lower roof, where he was ultimately brought to the ground via the aerial, and handed off to a medic crew for assessment. Unfortunately, I know more about the history of three twenty-four Main Street, Unit five-ten, than I do about the house where I've lived for the last twenty-five years. First, nobody was legally allowed to live in Unit five-ten. It had not been re-inspected after being tagged as uninhabitable in August of 2021. On February second, 2023, the city of Davenport issued an official notice that three twenty-four Main Street was a public hazard. It was ignored, of course. On February second, 2023, the city of Davenport issued an official notice to vacate by midnight on February twenty-seventh, 2023. That was ignored too. On March thirteenth, 2023, the city of Davenport Fire Marshal wrote a letter stating that nothing had been corrected, and the lack of responsiveness with this property is unacceptable. Nothing was done. On May third, 2023, the city of Davenport issued an official notice to vacate, which was also ignored. So how did this poor occupant, occupant, I'm sorry, so how did the poor occupant of five-ten end up trapped by debris in his apartment, fighting for his life, struggling to survive, climbing out of a window, and down an extension ladder to an aerial bucket on a fire engine? The city of Davenport put him there. The city of Davenport took federal HUD money, put the victim in Unit five-ten at three twenty-four Main Street, and then paid the slumlord thousands of dollars. That is precisely what happened. This is one of the reasons that the city of Davenport is being sued for tens of millions of dollars. Next week, I will continue reading from this nine-one-one report, and it's horrifying.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ron Twitter, Davenport, Rock Island. I've reviewed many papers, contracts, news articles, newspapers, wow. What are we going to do as a city? We are in trouble. There is responsibility for what happened at Main Street for all of us, all of us here, this council included. Three died. I look over there, and what do we have? Fresh sod, they water. Wow. Kind of looks pretty, don't it? Trying to wash away what happened there. That's what, that's what people are telling me. The blood that's over there will never go away. The city has taken a path that the voters now are saying, hey, wait a minute. Many stepped up, rather be for mayor or city council, whatever. Many have stepped up. That should tell all of you something. We as citizens are fed up, we've had enough. The direction the city has gone with the one-way system, you didn't even poll the tenants downtown to see if it's actually what they wanted. I heard half a dozen ten big shot investors, oh, we won it. And the vote, how it was done was, in my book, illegal, and I'll say that till I die. That should have never happened. You had thousands call, you had petitions, and now with this over here, week after week, these people, my new family, have come and spoken before all of you, every one of you. Where's the report? What's going on criminally? Nothing. I mean, granted, an investigation takes time, but there's got to be something you can give us, folks. You're hanging us out to dry here. We feel like it's being swept under the rug. That's what we're all feeling out here, and the people I talk to. We as citizens have a right to know. I've heard comments about city officials, you know, we're, we're going to hear rumors, we're going to hear this, we're going to hear that, but it boils down to one thing, we as a city failed. We needed to change the inspection. We closed an apartment building up because of problems. Oh, we're going to go through it, we're going to do stuff. Nothing was done. We had inspectors, licenses expired. Who's doing the inspections? Now we're doing a hard inspection on all the brick buildings. You know, too little, too late? Yes. Three people died, one got amputated. That's something that this council will be forever remembered by. The city itself, the staff who do wonderful things, but this time it failed. How are we going to fix it, folks? Your silence is not helping. You're making the voters mad. You gotta give us something. We have great respect and admiration for what you do. I don't come up here to talk to myself, I come up here to do something that I was raised. Make it a little better. That's all we're trying to do, everyone here. We want the city a little better. That's it. I, I've heard council rattle on about different things, but been pretty silent a few weeks about Main Street. I am so sad about this situation. I'm so sad for the city and what it's going to cost this city. Litigation, possible judgments. Are we going to be bankrupt? Is the state going to be running us? God, I hope not. We've got a wonderful financial system here that keeps the city humming, and investment-wise, it has been run well, but we're, we're tired. We're all tired. We want some answers, please.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is LaShawna Dixon. I'm part of the fifth ward, and I am just here today to let you know that we are tired of every time we come up here and say something, we're being told to shut up, or we're getting trespassed, or whatever. We're, we're tired of it. Some of us had the honor of joining a housing commission meeting on
Monday.
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 And we were not shut up, we were not point-of-ordered, we were not told, they wanted to hear from us, and that was amazing. If we could only have that type of energy in this room, it would be a lot better. It would be a lot better. And just to hear today, I am an African-American woman, as you can tell, I'm black, I am proud and black, but to hear the only African-American man that sits on this board every week, day in and day out, being called an N-word, that is not acceptable. It is not. So just like you did somebody else for calling somebody sweetie, honey, or whatever, I expect the same for him.
Exactly.
You're lucky it wasn't me, or around me. That is unacceptable behavior. We are not in nineteen forty-two, we are in twenty-twenty-three, and I remember hearing those words on a Thursday. That is sick, and anybody that knew about it or heard it should be absolutely ashamed of themselves. We are more than just our skin. We all bleed the same, we have one heart, two lungs, whatever, we all have the same thing. Just because he's dark, he doesn't need to be called an N-word, or have anything to do with it, person, color, whatever. Yes, he is that, but that has nothing to do with him sitting on this board and doing what he needs to do. That is sick. So just like y'all had that special meeting a couple weeks ago, we need one for him, I will not stand by while we let this happen to him. Let me hear it again. There needs to be something done now, there should be a special meeting right after this. We shouldn't see y'all walking out of cars. This needs to be dealt with now. Tim, you are beautifully black. And don't you ever let anybody disrespect you like that again. Talker, header, chester, prater, don't let any, if anybody ever, you address it then. Sick.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm sorry you dealt with that, Mr. Kelly. Week after week, we show up to speak to all, oh, Diane Salmon, eighth ward. Week after week, we show up to speak to all of you with the hope that you will eventually understand why we are here, but unfortunately, many of you still do not get it. We know this to be true because we see you quoted in the newspapers, and we see your arrogant posts on Facebook as well. One of you even tried to make digs at us on September sixth, but that only makes you sound like you're tooting your own horn. I quote, "To my numbered ward residents, you can tell it's campaign season, time of the year where candidates with no experience running their own business, or served any commissions, boards, or even in public office have all the perfect answers. You're gonna start hearing words or phrases like compassion, public safety, listening to our residents, potholes in roads, take care of businesses, safer neighborhoods, and reckless spending," end quote. Then you went on to say aye this and aye that seventeen times in a small post, as a matter of fact. When will you realize that the majority of us are sick and tired of the bureaucratic way things are done? We could care less if someone has held any positions, because many who have held these offices have lost touch with reality and with their residents. We want people in office who have integrity, who will be transparent and accountable in all areas of service. We want justice for the families of Daniel, Ryan, and Brandon, for Peach's, and for all the other residents who lost everything. Have you ever lost someone unexpectedly? It is extremely traumatic. In the early morning hours of January seventeenth, two thousand and eleven, my sweet cousin Wanda Jo was murdered by her boyfriend. He had stomped on her face so hard, her nose moved completely out of place. He then shoved her out of the truck, drove over her, and left her for dead in the middle of Fairmount Street in the freezing cold. Her poor mother had to go ID her body, and she was barely recognizable. She left behind three young daughters. The man who killed her served ten years in prison and has since been released. The shock and trauma this caused our family is still with us twelve years later. The people of the Davenport were traumatized only a hundred and fifteen days ago, and to add insult to injury, no one has been held accountable. Why is that? We were told in Alderman that you all don't have the authority to do anything, but you didn't have the authority to remove an Alderman, and you sure did it anyway, but that didn't stop you from going forward with any of that sham of a conference. Every other criminal is held accountable to some degree, but not the ones who caused this or allowed it to happen. Can you imagine what it's like having your family member there one minute, and then the next, they're gone? I can tell you, it's horrific. Then when you see that there's evidence time and time and time again pointing out things that weren't right, that loss of life could happen, and people still chose to ignore it is beyond mind-blowing. So you'll have to excuse us so-called nobodies as we continue to get up and speak every week. The way all of you, with the exception of the few people that have actually hurt us and supported us and met with us, are trying to run things is not working, and we want change. We demand change, and we will not be silent until that change happens. Every week, we hear we need to have respect for you, and you will have respect for us, but by your comments, we can clearly see that is not happening. This is not a game for us. We don't talk just to hear ourselves talk. Our hearts are broken for those families, and if you haven't learned that by now, then you are not listening to your constituents, and you probably are in the wrong line of work. And I hope the court rules against you trying to place somebody in the seventh seat, and if the second one can't be here, her thing should be removed just like that one.
Sure do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Hakan Dixon, fifth ward. So I just want to come up here to say that I have also experienced that you guys, some people don't listen to what we have to say, and has been told we don't know what we're talking about, we, or they feel like we're not in a position to know what we're talking about. And just like the pastor came up here last week said, it's about respect. Many of you, a few of you, because we can't point any people out, get up here, and you get on your horse, and you say anything and everything you want to say to make yourself even bigger than what you are, and make sure you have a big-feathered cap on, but you don't respect the people out here because you're bigger and you're, you think you're bigger and better. Luckily, no one's running against you. Respect us. We haven't even gotten that in the last three months. The respect. That's all we're asking for, and we can't even get that three months later, four months, almost four months later. I don't know what it is, the title has gotten to your head, but that title is for the community, not for you. Let's remember that. Like somebody else said, before you got up here, you, you are just like us. So get back into that mindset of, what about the people out here? We would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything else, Ms. Beal? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor? We're adjourned. Have a good evening, have a good weekend.